I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
For the agenda, September 15, 2014, where a meeting is presented.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, I'll say in my hand, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second. Have a motion in the second, I'll say in my hand, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. In that, next we have public participation.
Good evening, I'm Tina Oakley, I am the president of the SGNEA and I'm glad to be back and see all of you. Just wanted to let you know what we've done since July. We did have a back-to-school picnic and our administration from Dr. Lindsay, Dr. Flea, and Dr. Green all joined us at the park for our, actually we opened it up to everyone, a small gathering, but it was good. Also, we, SGNEA did something special this year that we haven't done in the past. We also gave a gift certificate to our new administration, Mrs. Geisler, middle school, and Dr. Green, to get them green with us. So we helped them out by giving them a gift certificate to Mid-America Rehab. And to help out our 100-year celebration, the SGNEA also gave a contribution. And I believe Dr. Flea has that check in her hand now. And then also, red ribbon is coming up and we also made our yearly contribution to that. So I'm hoping our contributions that we've made will help things be a success and that we're all together working to help our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here?
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Led, I'm a reading specialist at St. Genevieve Elementary. And I understand that there is a discussion of Amendment Three on the agenda for tonight's board meeting. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite board members, administrators, teachers, and parents to attend a community informational meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, September 16th at 7:00 PM at the Elk Lodge to learn more about Amendment Three and how it would affect our public schools. Thank you.
Mrs. Led, just to let you know, next weekend, the board has their annual conference and that is a big agenda item.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Lindsay?
Oh, we do not have any notes of the appreciation and we do have several things to get, to go through tonight. So I think at this time, I'll turn it over to Fixin' Bowman, who will give you the technology update.
Okay, for those of you who don't know, I'm Jason Bowman, Assistant Director of Technology. I'll give you an update on what we're having with technology and what we've done. Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Looks good.
Can you see it? Okay.
Does everybody see it okay? This summer, we added a wireless access point in all the classrooms K through three. That way, whenever we get more devices in those rooms, we don't have any issues as far as connectivity to our network. Also, we upgraded all our switches so that our backbone is good and solid and got rid of all the old switches that were no longer up the park. And we also added upgrades to the backbone where necessary. E-Mits, this year, we started a new session to fulfill all the requirements for E-Mits program, which is a district-funded program and equipment has been installed where we are now one-to-one in those E-Mits classrooms. The one-to-one program, we're in our third year. This year, we went with some new devices in our middle and high school. The first day of school, we gave out over a thousand Chromebooks to each, to the students. All the textbooks are available for download to those Chromebooks. And every student six through 12, as I just mentioned, has a Chromebook. Chromebooks are based on Google Chrome. The good thing about these is they have an eight-hour battery life, second boot up, seven-second boot up, and also seven-second startup. We don't have near as much update issues as we did with previous machines. They're much more sturdier and everything is now saved in the iCloud. As soon as they start working on a document, it automatically saves. It does utilize the internet and the apps a lot and it also has basic features for a student to work offline if they do not have internet access. Our computer rotation, we rotated machines in both the elementary schools and phased out some of the older machines. And we upgraded most of the machines to Windows 8 for those who wanted. If not, we stayed, kept them at Windows 7. We also reworked the St. Genevieve Elementary Computer Lab to make it an actual lab setting with Rose. And we rotated the netbooks from, that we previously had in the middle and high school to grades two and three, so they're also one-to-one. And we also removed all the old desktops and K through one, replaced those with netbooks too. Video surveillance, we currently have added a few more throughout the campus. And we've also replaced the older ones that were through COAX, which is an older technology, and replaced those with IP cameras. Expansion, all kindergarten students will hopefully in the next couple of weeks be receiving Google Nexus seven tablets along with the kindergarten teachers. And the students will use this for the whole class for instruction in small groups and also for enrichment. And we'll also install software on them for the students to use and different apps for various applications. The FACS received a competitive grant. Mrs. Newman wrote the grant for more technology in our classroom and Tech matched it 50-50. We plan to purchase digital cameras for our new teacher laptop and also a portable projector for her to take whenever she goes to various locations. The business lab grant, we wrote it again this year and we refreshed their laser jet printers. And we also add digital cameras and video cameras. We're gonna, we also purchased a high-capacity scanner and also are purchasing a video server for live streaming. Technology boot camp, we ran one online boot camp this summer, which covered online resources to use with students. And we also, students receive graduate credit through CMO. And we also ran multiple Chromebook trainings that were voluntary. Current systems, Google Apps for Education. We all go through Google for our email and each teacher has ability to have a website. All the programs clubs, extracurricular activities also have a website as well. And Google's great for document uploading and access wherever you have an internet connection. Lots of other programs relevant to Google Apps and offers many opportunities for collaboration with students and staff. Currently, our backup system solution, we're using Cobain to backup critical backups of our data and four online network storage units. Filtering, currently we use a system called Lightspeed that also is used to filter the Chromebooks too, when they're off-campus also. The Build Your Own Curriculum, we use for, as our new curriculum software. It's more robust than the previous program. We also have an online classroom called Moodle, it's very powerful for communication with classroom and the teacher and students. And CMO also uses the same program. And we also use a program called Google Classroom that's very easy to use with the Chromebooks. We also have United Streaming and Discovery Education for online videos used to enhance curriculum. Future implementation of Safari Montage, we're gonna implement soon to provide other online video services. We also have Portal, which runs Web Link for extra security and the ability for students to access files and also teachers and staff in the home directory so that they can also access documents at home. And it's a great place to put resources. New entry system, we have each, the door in the middle and high school, packed, and elementary, there's about nine places where we now have card entry system so that the whole campus is entirely locked. And each middle and high school student received an entry card so that they can get in and out of the buildings. And faculty will soon be getting one too, as soon as we get a few more cards in. Virtualization, we have some virtualization now and we're starting to increase that where we can. We also have a program called SNAP, which is a nursing program that integrates well with higher school. File-bound imaging, we're in the process of digitizing all the files deemed necessary. I had a few more in there. Sorry about that. The other slide that was in there was the program we use for staff, faculty, and admin to put in work orders. It's a program called SEIA, where they send an email to our work order system and if they need an issue fixed or whatever, we fix it. And so far, since August 1st, we've done 707 work orders. There's still a few work orders in there that we're trying to get ahead of, but we have been just a tad busy this summer and this school year. Does anybody have any questions about anything? Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a review of the standardized test scores and performance report. Dr. Flea?
It's my turn. I'm going to go through a lot of information with you. So I'm really gonna do a summary of the data. And I'm gonna start with ACT, work our ways into that. IEOC, and we'll conclude with our APR data.
Can you see? Can you see?
All right.
We have a lot to celebrate at St. Genevieve too, based on all of this data. Scores continue to be very strong overall. There are a few areas that we know we need to work on and they are focuses and we will continue to chisel away at them and try to find ways to increase our scores. So, you gonna do it, Jason?
Sure.
Okay. So we're gonna start with the ACT data. And we have five years of data here, from 2010 to 2014. If you notice, 2014 is the last line, all the way over at the right. Our composite score in the district is 22.5. At the state level, the composite score is 21.8. And if you look across that bottom line, what you see is that our English score was only 1/10 of a point lower than the state number, but in all other areas, math, reading, and science, we were higher than the state average. And this data in 2014 is the highest English, math, reading, and composite scores that we've seen in five years. So, we're very happy with our ACT scores right now. They also sent us something, percent of ACT testing students ready for college-level coursework. And they look at all the students that have taken the test and look at their scores and they kind of predict if they're ready for college English composition, college algebra, college social sciences, college biology, and then they look at all four areas overall. And as you can see here, our students performed really well in all areas, especially math. They were 23 percentage points higher than the state. So, our students are outscoring, and according to this data, are more ready than the average student in the college-level coursework. So now, we're going to move on to the math and EOC data. And we're gonna start with English Language Arts. Over on the left, those are our MPI scores. And MPI scores actually range from 100 to 500. And all of our scores fall between 300 and 450. So I cut the scale down so you could, you get a better idea of the gap, if you will. So we'll start here, English Language Arts, grade three. As you see, the district's MPI score is higher than the state. Bloomsdale did exceptionally well, 381.1, so. Next, we have English Language Arts, four. And we are just slightly 2.5 points higher than the state, but it's pretty consistent all the way across. In fifth grade, we continue to be higher than the state. And then we move to the middle school, sixth grade. We only have one middle school, so in this one, you'll only see district and middle school because it's the same score. At the, at sixth grade, English Language Arts, we did better than the state number, the state MPI. Seventh grade, we did 22.7 points higher than the state. And at eighth grade, we take a dip and it's like 6.4 points that we fall down. And the state score is actually higher at eighth grade than ours was last year. And then we move to the high school, English one, EOC. We have a slight gain here, about four points, as compared to the state. English two, which is a required test, we do really well, 24.5 points higher. We're actually hitting the 400 range here, so. That's really impressive and really good, especially in English. And next, we have math, our mathematics. So we'll start back at third grade. Third grade's kind of a plateau all the way across, but you probably noticed that our district MPI is lower than the state by 4.3 points. So, we know we have some work there in our grade math. In fourth grade, we go up and I think we're 11.8 points higher than the state. Fifth grade, we continue to go up. The district is at 382.8, pushing, getting closer to that 400 mark. And we move to the middle school, Mathematics six. We see another jump here of 22, 20.2 points, where the district is higher than the state. Seventh grade math, we jump again, 26 points. And then eighth grade is a big gap. The district students are only 24.5 points higher than the state average. Algebra one, EOC is a required test. And again, here, we have a nice gap with our students outperforming those at the state. Algebra two is voluntary and if you see the district number, we are at 434, not over the 400 mark there, which is really what we like to see. And then geometry, it jumps even higher. It actually went down this year, but it's still a lot bigger than the state number, by 66 points, I think. And then we move to science. Science, we take at fifth grade. You notice the district is at 409, with the state down at 346. And St. Genevieve Elementary just really did amazing. They hit 420. And Bloomsdale is right behind them at 387, so, very happy with that data. Eighth grade, science is our next area. The district's 379, the state is 339.2. Biology EOC is a requirement at the high school and we are higher by 11.7 points at the district level. And then we move to social studies. Social studies has two tests. Government is a requirement at the high school. If you see, if you see, the state is at 363 and we are at 354.7. Government is an area that we know and have known that we have some work to do and we're working on. We're making some changes in the way that classes lay out so we think in two years, that should be taken care of.
Really good mixed group tests, we should see the states.
Yeah, we should see the games. So we know this, we're gonna, we're working on it. American history is voluntary and at the state level, it's 314 and we are sitting at 338. So, all of this leads to our APR data. So, we'll start with Bloomsdale Elementary. This is kind of small, but it's the actual pictures, the images out of the reports that I get off of the Desi website. 2014, Bloomsdale had 92.9 percentage points, 92.9%. In 2014, they fell back just one and a half points to 91.4. And what happened with their data under number one, you see number one in the reports is in five standards, academic achievement. Standard one, their points stayed the same. Standard two, the subgroup achievement, they lost one point in English Language Arts. And then in standard four, their points stayed the same for attendance. So that one point in the subgroup achievement in number two caused their APR percentage to fall back, that 1.5%. And then St. Genevieve Elementary, in 2013, was at 91.4%. In 2014, they're at 97.1. They had a huge gain here. Standard one, the academic achievement, they gained four points in English Language Arts, which is, which is huge and accounts for their growth. Because in standard two, the subgroup achievement, in standard four, the attendance, their points stayed the same. So grabbing those four points up there in academic achievement pushed them to that 97.1 percentage mark. St. Genevieve Middle School, 2013 and 14 held, they're at 92.9%. All of their points stayed the same in all, in all categories, the academic achievement, the subgroup achievement, and their attendance. So, they held their own, they stayed the same. And then at the high school, we saw growth again. They went from 96.4% to 2013 and they're sitting at 97.1% for 2014. The high school is held accountable for two more standards than the other buildings. In standard one, their academic achievement, their points stayed the same. In standard two, their subgroup achievement, they lost half a point in social studies. In standard three, they're held accountable for college and career readiness. They gained two points in Section 3.5-6. This area, it evaluates post-secondary education training. It evaluates students who enter the military within six months of graduation and those students who are placed in careers or occupations related to their training at school. So they gained two points there. Standard four, their attendance, they lost two points. And in standard five, they gained 1.5 points towards their graduation rate. So as a district, in 2013, we were sitting at 93.2%. As a district, we went up, we are sitting at 95.4%. In standard one, as a district, our academic achievement, our points stayed the same. In standard two, in subgroup achievement, we lost half a point. In standard three, the college and career readiness, we gained the two points. Standard four, our attendance, we stayed the same. In standard five, we gained one and a half points. So basically, just a quick summary. ACT, we've had some, we saw some of the highest scores we've seen in five years. Math EOC, tested areas, there are 22 areas that we test our kids on district-wide. Only five of the 22 areas had lower state MPI scores. Looks like I missed a word, go fix this. Only five of those areas were lower than the state MPI scores. And I just kind of picked an arbitrary number of 20-plus. But we had 15 of the 22 areas that we tested that were higher than the state MPI score by 20 points, 20 or more points. Our APR summary, St. Genevieve Elementary made gains, the high school made gains, and as a district, we made gains. We have a lot to celebrate. You know, we have some work to do, but whenever I opened this up, there was nobody in the office and I called up Lindsay right away and I said, "You just missed my happy dance." So, I'm very proud, very happy.
We may have been on there, but we might go back to that slide and show like 133.5. That's out of 140 points.
Yes.
I hope it's on there.
It is, it's right there, 133.5 of 140 points.
Okay.
It's fine. Yes.
I can't figure out how school can score 10. A school district can score 10. On Desi's website, do you think we like, do you decide or mean?
I don't know. But, like you said, there's a lot to celebrate, a lot I'm very proud of. I'm proud of everything we do, so this is, it's icing on the cake for me, so.
One thing I want to add to is the State Board of Education is still trying to decide what they want to do with this, this whole new accreditation level and accreditation distinction. And actually, I think they may be deciding that at this month's State Board meeting. But the, the idea is that they want for sure 90% or above under APR. So we have that part taken care of. They're looking at possibly some other additional criteria to add in there. We don't know exactly what that is just yet. But we're very, very pleased to be at 95.4. We know that one of the criteria will be 90%. So it's really, you know, it's, it's a result of a lot of hard work by our teachers, administration, students, and support grandparents. And really, it's a combination of a lot of things. But we're very pleased with that kind of vibe.
We do have projections, PPI status scores, some things that I'm gonna go over as opposed to the nature of the teachers. We know what we have to do.
We all know that.
Yeah, we could get around that.
Thank you guys so much.
I know this agenda item says report of the superintendent, but we've had Jason Bowman that gave the technology report. Thank you for that, Jason, and Dr. Flea with the test scores and APR. And now, we're gonna turn to the principals to give the principal.
Absolutely.
Who would like to go first?
I'll start.
You're in the front row.
Yeah, and my lead point actually segues off data from last year, so it'll be a nice start. The first thing I want to talk about going into this year is ending last year in the, for automotive, the Automotive Society of Engineers test that we have to give, what's kind of like called the AAC test. In 2012, 13, we did not have a student qualify as proficient in that test. And I'm happy to report that at the end of last year, we had seven students take it. Four of them were proficient. One of them missed it by one point and one of them missed it by two points. So we were really within three points of having six of our seven students tested to be proficient. So I'm really proud of Mark Gibson and John, that he did to turn that around. I think that's amazing. The second thing I want to talk about, I'm gonna give a plug to Citizens Electric here. We had two students this summer, one of them was Adrian Weeberry, senior, go to an all-expense-paid state trip to Uh, we had two students this summer, one of them was Adrian Weeberry Senior, go to an all-expense-paid state trip to uh, the General Assembly. And then of course, if you go to the front cover, what you'll see is Jessica Pross, Lieutenant Senior, who got an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, D.C. So that stuff that happened over the summer that we're able to support in August. Also, or report in August, also just so you guys where things have went on, uh, the cheerleaders. We had, we are, we attended the N C A, the National Cheerleading Association Camp at S E M O. And uh, we had one girl, Amanda Casper, was chosen to receive an N C A, N C A Leadership Award. We also had seven of our fifteen girls chosen as All-American nominees. There were a total of sixty-nine of these in the camp. Seven of them were chosen as All-American and I'm proud to report that one of ours, Junior Drew Moore, was an All-American and will have an opportunity to participate in a Christmas parade at Walt Disney World in December. Uh, we went through our election of class officers. And just recently, this past Friday, we were able to have our annual Hall of Fame Day, which is just an amazing festivity. We do a running of the halls, we have a lunch for them. The Hall of Fame Committee, uh, basically I guess chaired, would be a good word, led by Mark Vogel on that day. Does an exceptional job of putting this all together. The induction ceremony, I'm proud to say that we had Mike Carroll, class of nineteen sixty-six, inducted. And also Chief Warrant Officer Kelly Barnes, class of nineteen eighty-five, inducted. So those are our two new inductees to the Hall of Famers this year and we're proud of them and that's basically what we did in August.
Uh, I think we had a great start to the school year. Lots of enthusiasm. Roughly right now, we're at four hundred and forty-five students. Uh, we had middle school open house, it's about, we had about forty-seven and a half percent attendance, parents showing up to pick up their student schedules. Um, our faculty has kinda gone crazy with Google Chrome, using our Chromebooks. And Beth checked me on this, but we had our building level meeting with our faculty. And during that meeting, um, we kinda challenged ourselves to, to submit some things and have the teachers submit some things over Google Docs and Google Forms and stuff. And then the next day, during that meeting, teachers were like, well, can we have a meeting tomorrow, start showing us how to do this? And that, that wasn't contracted time, that was their day off. And we had a room full in Miss LaRue's room. So they've kinda picked up the ball and started running with it, have done some fantastic technology things in their classrooms. We're hearing teachers talk about Kahoot, uh, Google Docs, Google Classroom, everything technology associated with lending assistance to their instruction during the class time. So, um, they've, they've taken the ball and run with it and we're really proud of them. Um, and in addition, this is kudos to Mrs. Giesler. If you haven't had a chance to check out the new teacher feature video, I know uh, you guys saw last month's video on the first day of school. There's another one up on the district website, the new teacher feature, uh, with all of our new uh, member, new faculty members at, at the middle school, so check it out. Um, we had a dental clinic at the end of August, went well. Uh, back to school dance beginning of September, we had about two hundred kids attending that, so we had a really good turnout for that. Um, coming up, this Thursday, we have three students attending the Do the Right Thing, um, what you call it, it's not a conference, it's a ceremony in St. Louis. Abby Engelmann won a hundred dollar shopping spree, had donated that to a needy family. Um, and then I nominated two of our middle school kids. I went up to a young man during lunch and uh, asked him to turn around and look at another young man who was over sitting by himself. And I asked him if he knew him and he turned around and saw who it was, said to a friend, hey, let's go sit by this kid and then went over and spent the entire lunch with him and kinda included him. Without me having to say another word other than, hey, do you know who this young man is? So, uh, hopefully this Thursday, either Officer Clark or one of our admin at the middle school will go up to the, uh, doing the right ceremony in St. Louis and honor those kids. Um, the I D cards, building on what Mr. Bowman was talking about, I think are working really, really well at the middle school. Uh, there still are some tweaks to work out with traveling to and from the pack, when it's raining, when it's not raining, where do they go? Uh, most of the cards have worked most of the time. If you guys haven't had a demonstration, stop by sometime and we can show you, they, they're really fantastic. Um, during advisory, on Fridays, we have a little um, treat distribution to the kids. And in doing that and in building on what, what Chris and Scott are doing at the high school, uh, with running of the halls, Lindsay Elders has uh, asked me if she could bring the band up and, and play some school music. And then after all that's over with, um, we sing the school song together and then we get to hand out treats to the kids. But it's, it's building school spirit and if you ever get a chance, about ten o'clock on Friday, if you wanna see a bunch of kids singing the school song and some school spirit stuff by the middle school up in the hallway.
Okay, at Bloomsdale Elementary, we had nineteen um, students transfer out and twenty-four transfer in. Teacher of the month was Stacy Bell and faculty of the month, or staff of the month was Katie Gennier. Each grade level has had M R I training and that's in collaboration with St. John Elementary. We've had one full day for each grade level. We had a earthquake fire drill at nine fifty-five and we exited the building safely in fifty-nine seconds. Three hundred and twenty of them. Um, twenty-four students celebrated birthdays at Bloomsdale Elementary and then we've had multiple students come for good papers or handwriting or um, art pictures. And then we've also started a wall of fame for each class to donate, I mean, to nominate a student to win the wall of fame. Um, but I wanted to mention something that's not in any report to read. It just is a true testament to how close this district is. We lost a wonderful kindergarten teacher last week and we even had board members offer to come help supervise with kids. Um, Dr. Lindsay, Dr. Fleet was on staff and they had a meeting ahead of time to help with moral support and staffing. And the principals came out and helped and um, teachers supported each other and we just wanted to thank everybody for their support during that time.
Uh, at St. John Elementary, we had some of that same transferring in and transferring out. We had thirty-nine children move out and we had forty-seven move in. So we've been doing a lot of paperwork with that. Our open house uh, attendance for kindergarten was at a little over eighty-three percent. And for our K five open house, it was at seventy-six, which were both about what it was at last year. Um, we've had a earthquake drill and a tornado drill. And we did not do it as fast as Lori, sorry. But I did hear that, uh, we do do it pretty fast. Uh, but not, but nothing to compare. Uh, we had the Ned Show come in and it's a little positive behavior support program. And they do things with yo-yos and it was big excitement for the kids. Uh, we're also in M R I training with our whole staff. And I, I would like to just go along with what Lori said, the outpouring of support from this district was just unbelievable. It, it just came from everywhere and it was physical and mental and it was from the heart and uh, we truly appreciate it. We truly appreciate it. A hard week, but it helped us.
You guys know what this means to us when you come up here and give us those reports. It makes us feel, I'm so excited, I, the next day I go to work and tell everybody all this exciting news and it's, it's really, it's really rewarding. It's really rewarding to do this. Thank you. Okay, and we'll move on to safety.
Uh, there's some information in your uh, in your packet about some safety drills that were conducted.
Then we'll move on to unfinished business versus the emergency procedures.
You got it, Lincoln.
Um, about two years ago, we went through an extensive process regarding safety and security. This led to a lot of upgrades, the key cards, a lot of things that are happening around here. And we also have this nice comprehensive emergency procedures for the district. I updated this and I'll pass it around so you all can see it. But it is not public information because some of this is very confidential and, and um, it is, once it's approved, will be given to each building and to the local emergency responders and to people on the teams that need to know the information. So it's not a public document that I, I assure you, it's been gone through and it's, it's very in-depth and extensive. Uh, some of the upgrades and the changes that I made were mainly in updating the new personnel information, their contact information. Uh, at the building level, they updated the building level emergency plan, so these copied, they're in there too. Um, I checked the emergency numbers for accuracy and there were some forms for the end. If we ever have to re-apply students and parents that I, I tried to streamline and make a little bit easier in that process. So, I went through it pretty thoroughly, I, I feel like it's in good shape. It was in good shape from Dr. Lindsay, so there wasn't a whole lot I had to do other than learn it. One of the things that I need to learn right now, but yes.
I move to approve the updates to the district emergency procedures.
Second.
A motion, the second amendment by C N I.
Alright.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the best ones for two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year.
Yes, there were only minor changes. Uh, there were two routes where the mileage increased, one by twelve miles and one by five miles. And another route where the mileage increased by twenty-six miles. Uh, I do have information, if you'd like to review it with maps and that sort of more detailed information, but um, I would ask you to prefer.
I would approve the best ones for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, opposed by C N I.
Alright.
Opposed, motion carries.
The only question I had was uh, snowboards.
Yes, they, uh, as a part of the contract there, they have those in place by October, the end of October.
We will have snowboards. Okay, next is, yeah, if it's not. The other night on the news, this is the exact word, it is likely, that it will feel cold winter, it's snowing. And I said likely, okay? I could've said that. Anyways, so.
Fifty-fifty chance.
Yeah. Farmers home and apple supposed to be like much. Who knows? Okay, next is instructional program presence presentation for third grade.
Now that we're back in school, then uh, we are moving on with the program presentations, so third day. We're on.
I'm Andrea Fritch, I teach uh, third grade in St. John Elementary and I'm gonna talk about the math aspect of our curriculum. There are five domains in math that we, that we currently cover in third grade. The first one is numbers and operations and base ten, which is place value and rounding and, excuse me, multi-digit arithmetic, like adding and subtracting numbers and double-digit multiplication. The second domain is operations and algebraic thinking. Third grade, we introduce multiplication, we use arrays, we use repeated addition, um, we use teaching groups of means. Multiplication, there's a lot of modeling to teach them what multiplication is and we use that to solve problems and um, and use that to transfer into division. Uh, students are expected to solve two-step word problems with the multiplication and division and addition subtraction. The third strand is numbers and operations of fractions. We do modeling with fractions, we learn how to put fractions on the number line. We learn what equivalent fractions are, simple equivalent fractions, and we compare simple fractions. The fourth domain would be measurement and data. We tell time to the minute, liquid, liquid volumes, we'll put those and go from one to another. Masses of objects, we learn about graphs, pictographs and bar graphs, we create graphs on data. And we focus a lot of time on perimeter and area of figures, mostly quadrilaterals, but some composite figures and stuff like that. And then the fifth strand would be geometry. We reason with shapes and their attributes, like group them together by what they look like. Thank you.
Good job, girl.
I'm Dana Bowen and I'm at the Bloomsdale Elementary building and I am to talk about E L A, which consists of reading, writing, and our language. And with the Common Core, we focus strictly in the reading area on literature, which is our fiction text, informational text, which is nonfiction. And then our foundational skills, which are phonics and our word recognition. And what we tend to do in those areas is, is that we look for common skills such as um, possible sequencing or main idea. And we'll teach those back to back in the different contexts of fiction and nonfiction. So they're getting a double dose of that strategy or that skill, but they're seeing it in two different forms of text. And so that really helps them a lot when it comes time for the math test. And another thing that we do with the reading is, first of all, we would like to thank you for allowing us to go through our M R I training again. Um, some of us have had the three years, but we've had such transition among teachers or new teachers in and out that several of the teachers have not gone through that three years of training. So it does give a refresher to those of us who have had it, but it gives them an extensive time of learning for those who have not had the full-blown training. So we would like to thank you for that. And in that reading, Linda Jo Baker is our instructor and she's really getting us going with Common Core and how we can relate that into what we're going to need to use for tests this spring. And we're doing lots of reading response journal writing, where we focus on a strategy question or strategy practice, map stem practice, and reflection. So they're always responding about what they're reading. In the writing area, we focus on three main pieces, one of which is our narrative, which is rather easy for the, you know, easier for the kids. We have the informative explanatory text and we have the opinion text that they write. Now, you know, it doesn't sound like we do a lot with those being the three strands. We do other writing, those are just the three main focal points for third grade. And then in language, we just focus on your standard English grammar in writing and speaking. And you know, that's just basically your grammar um, aspects of your nouns, pronouns, adjectives, and such like that. And we also focus on the capitalization, punctuation, and spelling of written text. And in all of those three different things, we learn in different ways to present them through this M R I initiative that we're going through, so. Okay, and at Bloomsdale Elementary, I work with Ms. Pho and Ms. Coats, who are also in the third grade area. So there's just three of us out of Bloomsdale.
And I work with Nicole Shank, new teacher, and Stephanie Elbizer, Megan Keatker. And this year in third grade, we have two student teachers, I have Rachel Bate with me and Tessa Brown is with me speaker.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, next is new business, the assessment plan updated testing. Doctor Fleet. Um, the local assessment plan was reviewed and updated uh, to incorporate some new standardized testing that's being implemented. Um, there are three main areas that I, I looked at and changed. In sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we no longer give the Stars reading test. We give the Gates and the Genti reading test in those two grade levels. We still do the Stars reading test at third, fourth, and fifth grade. I think we checked up and I triple-checked it just now.
Yes.
Um, we did add the Aspire test at the tenth grade. The Aspire test is a predictor for students to see how they're gonna perform on the A C T. So we're going to do that at tenth grade. And we have also added um, the required A C T for all eleventh grade students to our testing cycle. Um, on this required A C T testing, there are only two days that we can do this. There, the. The actual test date is April twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, and the only makeup day we have is May twelfth, two thousand fifteen. So that is our timeframe. We did a webinar about three weeks ago and there was some concerns for us, you know, this is during math testing, this is during EOC testing, this is right in the middle of testing windows. They understand, they didn't know where else to put it right now because if they push it back too far in the day in December, the kids will not have had the full curriculum that they felt like they would need. But if they pushed it to February or March, you're talking, we could still get some snow days. And if we get snow on the test day, then that's going to create some chaos and havoc. So those are our two test dates for this required ACT for our eleventh quarters. So we are working on that process now.
No questions? I would need to question. I would approve the assessment plan updated testing schedule.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, I'll open by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is the vocational grant bid.
You may remember about a year ago, we expanded our BOAG program offerings and added a course. And that was done not only to get our needs met for students, but also to give us an opportunity to apply for certain grant funding that was available out there that wasn't available to us prior to that. We did apply for a vocational enhancement grant and did receive funding for that grant. What we applied for and what was approved through the grant process was for the BOAG department to have a fifty horsepower tractor with a cab, four-wheel-drive loader, CBT transmission, along with an eight-foot rear mount blade, a six-foot rear mount box blade, a six-foot rear mount bug aerator, a six-foot rear mount rotor tiller, and a six-foot rear mount finishing bolt. It's really a nice piece of equipment. Over fifty percent of the cost of this is paid for through the vocational enhancement grant. Not only will it be available for use by the BOAG department, but when it's not used by them, it will be used by the management department to assist us with things. We went out and sought bids for, for this tractor. Excuse me. So we contacted our, our local companies that do provide this kind of machinery and solicited bids from them and we opened and read aloud hopefully said this morning. We had two bids. One was from Flea's Equipment. The bid price on that was forty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars. And we had a bid from William Navi Company and the bid quote on that was fifty-three thousand five sixty-eight oh three. So what I would recommend is that you accept a bid from Flea's Equipment for forty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-three. It is about six thousand four hundred dollars less than. Both bids did meet the bid requirement.
I need to approve the bid from Flea's Equipment.
We have a motion in the second, I'll open by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is the addition of the teacher aides for Saint Gin Elementary kindergarten.
At the time that I sent the board packet out, enrollment in kindergarten at Saint Gin Elementary was at ninety students. I checked it this morning and it was at eighty-eight. And then I talked to Ms. Ed and Ms. Diesel this afternoon, it was at eighty-nine, but there was rumors of number ninety coming, coming back. So we're, we're right at ninety students in the four sections at Saint Gin Elementary. We have tried to do some things as far as rearranging some schedules, but just felt like that we needed to add a full-time A at the kindergarten level to assist with this large class size going through. Last month, you know, we talked about potentially adding another section of kindergarten and for a variety of reasons. We decided that that would not be in the best interest of those favors. I would recommend that you have this A position.
I move to approve the addition of a P grade at Saint Gin Elementary for kindergarten.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second, I'll open by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the research project.
Before, before we do that, I don't know if we mentioned that at the beginning, and I think people have guessed, but Mr. Boba is in the computer over there. He is participating via video conferencing tonight. He was not able to attend the board meeting, but our, our policies do allow for board members to participate in the meeting, to make motions, to vote, to engage in the discussion or whatever through both audio means and video means. So Mr. Boba has, has been joining us tonight through the power of technology. I don't know, you may have noticed, Mr. Bossler is kind of moving him around. That's, that's so that he can be placed, hopefully toward whoever might be talking at the time. Well, but we appreciate you joining us in this fashion for tonight's meeting.
Well, thank you. I appreciate Mr. Bossler accompanying.
What a friend.
At this time, we will go to the next, the next item. Of course, you have some information in your board packet, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Rook at this point.
Hi, I'm Michael Roke. I've taught the district about seventeen years now and American history since about two thousand and three. This is a real good meeting. We asked for this study permission with our test score report there. American history scores are about fifty percent above the state average. And with our technology update, we've been running a one-on-one program. It's the third year now. So what I'd like to do in my doctoral dissertation is look at two years of American history before the one-on-one initiative and two years of American history after the one-on-one initiative and see what impact the computers actually had on that score. And then my, that will require no, no contact with students, just mining the information that we have in, in our data. And then my committee wants me to find out why did things change. I don't want to involve interviewing and surveying American history teachers. I would ask for permission to continue with this study so I can finish the doctoral degree.
I think that's exciting that you guys do that. You and Mr. Boyd, this is the same kind of.
Yes, same program, we're all in the same classes.
This is exciting. You have our blessing.
Thank you.
I move to allow Mr. Michael Roke to conduct research on EOC scores for his doctoral dissertation.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, I'll open by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This will, with the teachers' mind, I believe, I think. Next would be the resolution to oppose Amendment three.
Before we do that, I do want to mention that Dr. Lee's, is now a doctor.
Bring it away. You want to.
Your dissertation's been. Amendment three, as we are well aware, Mary Ellen Ladd mentioned earlier, it's a constitutional amendment on the ballot for November. We have a variety of concerns with Amendment three, the impact that it has on local control, some of the flaws that we see within the constitutional amendment, the impact on teacher evaluation, the impact on mandated due assessments, the impact that that will have on budget, those kinds of things. One thing that I would point out is that Missouri School Boards Association, Missouri Association of School Administrators, Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals, Missouri Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of Teachers, Missouri State Teachers Association, the MNEA, Missouri National Education Association, Mayor, Missouri Retired Teachers Association, and several other organizations, all the opposed Amendment three. I present to you a resolution for the Saint Gin V R two Board of Education to oppose Amendment three. If you don't mind, I'd like to just read that for everyone so that they understand what's in the resolution. It says, whereas Amendment three on the November ballot is the state mandate that shifts local control for educational decisions away from parents, teachers, administrators, and school boards. And whereas Amendment three is a poorly drafted and deeply flawed proposal that has many unintended consequences for teachers, administrators, and school boards. And whereas Amendment three would prevent, would prevent school boards from hiring, promoting, compensating, or dismissing teachers in accordance with board policy. And whereas Amendment three would force taxpayers to pay for additional standardized tests at a time when our public schools remain significantly underfunded by the state. And whereas Amendment three significantly changes teacher evaluations away from a tool to improve teacher performance. Therefore, be it resolved, the Saint Gin V R two Board of Education on this fifteenth day of September of two thousand fourteen, hereby opposes Amendment three on the November ballot.
I move to approve the resolution to oppose Amendment three. Second.
I have a motion in the second, I'll open by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I just want to let you know that there's, I don't know how many exactly, but I got a list the other day on all the school districts that have already sent resolutions in from their board meetings, so it is definitely something.
That's wonderful. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Well, we love what you're doing in New York. Well, it just shows tonight what, how good you guys are. And look at our school district.
Yeah.
It's because of you guys. Okay.
Good for you, Rachel.
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote following the regular open meeting on October twentieth, two thousand fourteen. To be held, the R W Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, Saint Gin, Missouri, for purchase, testing, and voting upon the following items of business: legal action, causeless action, or litigation; lease, purchase, or sale of real estate; hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employee; proceedings involving the mental or physical health of an identifiable individual; scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals; testing and examination materials; welfare cases of identifiable individuals; preparation for negotiation with employee groups; software code for electronic data processing and documentation thereof; specification for competitive bidding until approved or published; sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened; sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until the contract is executed; individually identifiable personnel records; performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment; records protected from disclosure by law; scientific and technological innovation to which the owner has a proprietary, proprietary interest; records relating to municipal hotlines established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing; confidential privileged communication with the military; operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident; existing or proposed security system and structural plan of district property; the portion of a record that identifies security system or access code; records identifying what allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption to configuration of components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, telecommunications network; credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes, or authorization codes are used to protect electronic transactions. A further move and notice of this meeting and its tentative agenda to be postponed as required by law.
Second. I have a motion in the second, Nicole or Eric Walker?
Yes.
David Boba?
Yes.
Charlie Crowder?
Yes.
Tom Dunkie?
Yes.
Karen McDaniel?
Yes.
Martha Weesinger?
Yes.
Motion carries six, seven.
We have a closed record and a closed vote under your short break.
I have a motion in the second, I'll open by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for being here.